Motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Motion by trustee Clifford, supported by treasurer Honold. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Approval of minutes 11-7-2016.
My second.
Motion by treasurer Honold, supported by trustee Clifford. Any questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Public announcements. Are there any public announcements at this time? No public announcements. I have a few, if done by the board. I'd like to take this moment first, if I could, to, it's an anniversary, just in two days it's the anniversary, 75th anniversary actually, of the Pearl Harbor attack. Matter of fact, they still have a gentleman today that served in the armed forces. They had a gentleman that was 104 years old today that they're going back to Pearl Harbor to revisit the site. So I thought a moment of silence is definitely do that in remembrance, if you could please, just for a moment. Thank you. Also, I'd like to just announce our Christmas holiday hours as follows. The township will be closed from Friday, December 23rd through Monday, January 2nd, 2017, reopening on Tuesday, January 3rd, 2017. And on behalf of the board, because we won't have another meeting prior, I know I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year and Happy Holidays, and please stay safe. And during this holiday period, if you know of anybody that needs any assistance or any help, please give us a call, let us know if any of that arises during this time. Also, we have a couple openings for different boards and commissions. If anybody's interested, please contact the supervisor's office with a letter, stop in, complete an application. And last but not least, I'd like to thank everybody that attended the community dinner at the New Haven High School, that participated and volunteered their time and donated goods and items and showed up and ate the food. It was a great event, great cooking and great time for everyone. Thank you. Any other public comments? Mr. Clifford?
Also in my position is Sons and Vanvets Commander up at Post 72 in New Haven. You can get assistance with me, excuse me, a food basket, gifts for the kids. It all comes in one basket. You can go up to the post, turn your name in, you'll be considered. I'm not guaranteeing, there's a lot of people turn in, but if you choose to go out there, put your name on the list at Post 72 in New Haven, your name will be considered for your food basket, or anybody that you know that has issues or is down on their luck. So I'll give you the post number if you'd like, it's 749-5201. Call and get your name on the list, or go through me. I'm here available at the township, you can leave a message on my voicemail or talk to me after the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford. Any other public announcements? Okay. Public comment, any public comment at this time? Good evening.
Good evening, Kieran Turci. I'd like, if possible, to retain my seat on the planning commission. I feel I have a lot of knowledge and experience, and I think I can benefit the township. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Other public comment? Number seven, consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board and will be enacted by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or public so requests or prior to the meeting, in which event, the chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under item number eight below. Approval of the consent agenda shall be by a majority roll call vote of those present voting.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Thank you. Motion by trustee Clifford, supported by trustee Gurley. Any other questions or discussion? Deputy clerk, roll call please.
Gurley? Clifford?
Aye.
Honold? Kendall?
Aye.
Trumley?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. There were no items removed from consent agenda. Number nine? I'm sorry, just can't tell, yes. Orders and bills? Apologize for that.
No problem. On our bills, we have one that was deleted, one that was added, so we have a net difference of $46, bringing our bills list to $380,439.36.
I make a motion to approve the $380,439.36.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by treasurer Honold, supported by trustee Clifford. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Number nine, unfinished business. Senior center coordinator advertisement. Jeanette, do you still have the old advertisement from before regarding that? I think the last time we just did it for two weeks tops, I think?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And this is due to Ms. Kendall, Clerk Kendall. She is stepping down from position to fill the clerk's position, so she can't hold the two positions at the same time. And I don't know if you wanted to speak to that at this time or not?
Well, I really guess, the only thing I have to say is pursuant to the opinion of our township attorney, and I thank you for that work on that for me, I am resigning my position because it is a conflict to hold both, so.
I think we advertised for two weeks the last time?
Two weeks. We had the wage, if that hasn't changed, which I will check with you because I'm not sure. And then how long do you want to accept resumes?
I would say up till the time we make a choice, but I would like members of the board to be involved in the, at least one other board member. Jeanette, Ms. Kendall, if you'd like to be involved since you were the coordinator, just to make sure we find a quality individual, do our best, and we'll take them right up to the time we decide to hire if that's the case.
What paper, do you want, just the voice, or do you want?
I believe that's what we ran the last time. Does anybody else have any other ideas for that? But I think that was sufficient. I think it was the most cost effective and the quickest way I know. I want to just make sure we get that out there as soon as possible, so there's no lapse in our program.
If we get to add to them by the end of this week, we can have it in next week's paper and the following week. So that would be resumes.
The only difficulty we might overcome is the holiday season right now.
Yeah, exactly.
With people, so we might have to revisit this again due to the holidays on people looking for employment right now with that.
You want to do one week now and then one week after the New Year?
I would say that might not be a bad option, based on what we're dealing with right now time of year.
Okay.
Does anybody have any other thoughts or ideas? Just a motion for advertising.
I motion to approve the advertisement for the senior center coordinator advertisement for one week before the holidays and one week after.
If needed.
If needed.
Thank you. Motion by trustee Gurley, supported by treasurer Honold. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. New business. 2015-2016 audit report.
Good evening. My name is Kieran Shafik. I am with Stuart Bovine-Winfield, and we are the auditors for the township, and the board contracts with us to do their audit. I'm just going to do pretty much a quick synopsis of the audit and financials of the township, as it's about a 50-page report, and I'm just going to keep it short for you guys. So really, in the audit report, there's an independent auditor's report. That's really the only part of the report that is ours. It gives our opinion on the financial statements, and the township does have an unmodified opinion. Everything has been reported in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The next section of that is the management's discussion and analysis, which is written by management, and really just gives a narrative of the township's activities, really in word form, rather than just numbers. The township financial statements are really presented in two different ways. One is in entity-wide financial statements, which brings everything of the township into it, the buildings, the fixed assets, the debt that the township has. But the traditional way that townships are, who look at their financials, are on a fund financial basis, and that's what we're going to talk most about tonight. With the general fund, at the end of the year, June 30th, 2016, the general fund had assets of $1,920,734, liabilities of $43,234, and deferred inclusive resources of $22,907, leaving the fund balance of $1,854,593. The activity during that year, the year ended June 30th, 2016, revenues came in at $986,402, with expenditures of $1,118,704, for a change in fund balance of a decrease of $132,302. Fund balance was broken up into a couple different areas, the largest being an unassigned fund balance of $1.2 million, which is really used for your next year's operations of what is able to be used next year. There are a couple other funds, for special revenue funds, which really bring in revenues for a specified purpose. With the road fund, there were revenues of $136,280, and total expenditures of $65,635 for an increase in fund balance of $70,645. The fire fund had revenues of $498,566, and expenditures of $401,926 for an increase in fund balance of $96,640. The PTA revenue fund had revenues of just over $2.2 million, expenditures of $1.4 million, and transfers to other funds to your water and sewer fund of $1.2 million. And then there were two smaller funds of the liquor law enforcement and monitoring fee, which had revenues of $7,171, and expenditures of $1,557 in their liquor law enforcement and the monitoring fee brought in just under $10,000 this year. There is a debt service fund as well for the Chapter 23, had interest revenue of $154, and that was all the activity in that fund this year. With their water and sewer funds this year, there were revenues of $1,863,750, operating expenses of $858,680, which excluded depreciation, and then depreciation expenses $776,900 for an operating income of $228,170. There were non-operating expenses this year, $868,356, for a loss of $640,000. However, with that transfer in from that PTA revenue fund, net position increased by $584,814. The networking capital of the enterprise fund, or your water and sewer fund, there were current liabilities of $1.7 million, and current liabilities of just under $300,000 for a networking capital of $1,448,251, which is basically just your current assets that are remaining. Along with the audit report, the board had been given a couple other letters, a couple different reports of the independent auditor's report on internal control and the audit communication letter. Those are in your packets upfront with you guys, and I really appreciate you letting me come and talk about your audit this year. It went very well, and we look forward to next year already. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you, Kieran. Any questions for Kieran?
Not at this time.
Also? Thank you very much, Kieran.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the 2015-16 audit report as presented.
My second.
Motion by clerk Kendall, seconded by treasurer Honold. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. Fire inspectors 2017 winner educational seminar, chief.
Thank you. Before I start on this, welcome to all the new board members, and look forward to continued support from the board and the great working relationship we've always had with the board, the fire department level, and I invite all of you to come down, stop in and see me, and our next meeting will be a week from tomorrow at 7:00 at the fire station, so if you want to stop by, any of you, to meet all the guys prior to them going to work, feel free to come on by, really. I know Scott's been there before. I invite Michelle and Luanne, Kathy's been there dozens of times, but come on in and see what, how the fire department runs. Last week, I sent you a letter for the annual Michigan Fire Inspectors winner seminar, and this is a seminar that I go to every year in order to maintain my current certification as state and NFPA licensed fire inspector. So this year's conference is the 19th and 20th of January. I've included all the cost between the seminar and the hotel, so the total cost, less than the dinner, is $394.68. So at this time, I would request approval of me attending this class, and this is a budgeted item, this goes under a line item that I have for the budget under training. Any questions?
I make a motion to approve the fire chief's request for the conference.
My second.
Motion by trustee Clifford, supported by trustee Gurley. Any other questions or discussion from the chief? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, chief. Stonehouse sidewalk replacement request.
Good evening. At a previous meeting, it was noted of some deficiencies in one of the sidewalks over at our rental property, the Stonehouse, which is located just south of the office here. Upon inspection, I did contact three contractors to have that sidewalk replaced. If you look in your packet, there are a couple pictures of it to show what the deficiencies are. At the time of submitting this proposal, I was only able to get two quotes from two different contractors, even though I contacted four total. I did receive a third quote today, but it does not change my recommendation. Okay? The two quotes that I did receive, one from Bayshore Construction for the amount of $2,400, and the second quote I received was from GS Construction for $875. The parameters of the project were the same. The sidewalk is approximately three feet wide by 30 feet long. I would recommend the quote from GS for the $875, it does cover the whole scope of the work and does include 12-month warranty. They are a licensed and insured contractor.
Do you want them to start on this right away?
He, as soon as I give him notice, yeah, because of the inclement weather that's rapidly approaching, yeah, so I'd like him to start as soon as possible.
Okay.
Cam, the warranty for Bayshore was the same as GNS?
He did not indicate in his quote, but I would imagine, especially with the other work that he's doing down the street, that he would have probably matched that. And just for conversation's sake, the third quote that I received today was for $1,900.
Okay. Was for what, Cam?
$1,900.
$1,900.
What does he mean by winter protection?
During the winter months, like this kind of weather, because of the freezing weather, they have to use hot water, sometimes they use a calcium chloride to slow the process down, to make the concrete set properly. That's what I kind of figured, but I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Cam, do you know if he was using the same GS that he was using, the same concrete mix with the fiber mesh, because it does the same?
I doubt that he's going to use Siksa, because of the driveway down the street with the heavy truck traffic, requires the heavier mix. This is a simple sidewalk with foot traffic.
Pretty much not weight-bearing, other than pedestrian traffic?
Correct. You know, that was Bayshore's, that was their idea to use the same mix. You know, if it made the cost go up that much more, you know, that was his decision.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to accept a bid of GNS Construction to replace the sidewalk at the Stonehouse.
My second.
Motion by trustee Clifford, supported by trustee Gurley. Any other questions? All those in favor, aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you.
You're welcome. I will contact him tomorrow, first thing tomorrow morning, and as soon as I have a timeframe, I will let the board know.
Thank you.
On a quick separate note, a few months back, the streetlight proposal that was approved for the area of 27 and Grashett, I did send a follow-up email to the DT representative end of last week, and I have not received a response yet, so I do not have a timeframe on the completion of that project. Thank you.
2017 assessment notice preparation and mailing request. Mr. Majek.
Good evening. Welcome to the new trustees. I'm your assessor, Tom Majek, if you had a minute before. I've got a couple of items. The first one is the mailing of the 2017 assessment change notices. That's an annual process, it is required by the state. There are three bids that we received, and there's a range of about $25, and while I'm not choosing the lowest bidder on this, I have had experience with the vendor that I run, the KCI, and it's been satisfactory. Have no issues with them, very satisfied, so that's the primary reason why I'm requesting approval to use KCI for the notices. Is there any questions on what the notices are?
Any questions for Mr. Majek?
Not at this time, I'm pretty familiar with this.
Your recommendation is KCI for 500, or I'm sorry, $602.98 total.
The KCI, it's for the assessment change notices, is the price excluding postage is $537.32.
Thank you.
Postage will vary depending on the number of pieces we actually mail, and if there's sufficient number to get a discount through the post office. And in the past, KCI has been very diligent in making certain that we get all discounts that are available through the post office.
I motion to accept the estimate for KCI for the purpose of the assessment and mailing requests.
My second.
Motion by trustee Gurley, supported by trustee Clifford. Any other questions for Mr. Majek during this? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. 2017 personally, personal property statement preparation and mailing request. Mr. Majek.
It's very similar to the one that we just dealt with. This is pertaining to the personal property statements that's mailed out annually roughly between Christmas and New Year to the personal property holders in the township and in the village of New Haven as well. And the business owners will fill those out and return them back to us to generate the assessments. And while I have not had, well, excuse me, I've gotten three quotes on this job, and KCI is one, and we have used them in the past satisfactorily, but their bid is not the lowest by far. There's a Whitlock Business Systems that is substantially lower than the other two bids that we got. And I did some calling around and asked their client list if they were satisfied. They gave us seven contacts, we contacted five of them, and everyone was satisfied. So I'm confident that we'll get good service. I think it's something that we can't pass up, excuse me, the gap between the two bids, the lowest being Whitlock, and the next lowest is over $200.
I make a motion that we accept a bid of Whitlock Business Systems to mail the required 2017 personal property statements.
Motion by clerk Kendall, seconded by treasurer Honold. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, gentlemen. Better off, planning commission appointment. I want to thank the deputy supervisor for helping me put this together, because I know how confusing it is every year with people extending terms and replacing terms, and appreciate it. And currently at the top, I believe that's, we have seated at this time, correct, Jeanette?
No, that, yes.
Yes.
One that is highlighted in yellow at the very bottom is all up at the end of this month.
All right, we have a position for a new board of trustee member, another position We have a position for a new board of trustee member, another position of Ms. Hunter, whose term is up, and Julie Cox, whose term is up. So for the new board of trustee member, I'd like to appoint Scott Clifford. I don't know, attorney Jopp, do you have to do one by one individually? Would be the best way, or is it...
It's best to do them one by one.
That's what I figured.
In a discreet manner, whatever works best for the board, as long as it's clear what the term of appointment is.
And Mr. Clifford, we appoint him to, starting December 16th, to a four-year term. If we'd like to start with him.
And he has a four-year term because it coincides with his appointment as trustee. But everybody else on the commission is a three-year term. So I'm making a motion to Scott Clifford to plan a commission.
Thank you. I have a motion by treasurer Honold, supported by clerk Candle. Any other questions regarding Mr. Clifford? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Clifford. Second, for the December 16th disposition, we're on January 1st, 2017, through December 31st, 2019. I would like to appoint Mike Vennard. He is currently an alternate on the ZBA.
I motion to approve Mike Vennard for the planning commission appointment.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. I have a motion by trustee Gurley, supported by treasurer Honold. Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And then for the last term, for Julie Cox's expiration, from January 1st, 2017, to through December 31st, 2019, I would like to appoint Joe Marino.
I second. My question. Which one are you talking about? The zoning board of appeals right now?
No, the planning commission.
The planning commission?
Yes. We do have zoning board of appeals right after this one.
Can I ask, is Julie Cox not allowed to be reappointed? Is she stepping down, or you just want to replace her?
I'm appointing somebody else.
So she's in one position?
I don't know. I'm reappointing the position.
Is there any support for Joe Marino?
Make a motion we appoint Joe Marino to the planning commission.
I second. I can object.
Excuse me, I'll take comments in just one minute. I have a motion by trustee Clifford, supported by trustee Gurley. Any question or discussion? Go ahead, ma'am.
I object to this. You don't know if she wants to continue on this, in this position, and you're replacing her without her knowledge?
It's my appointment when a term expires.
Isn't the board the one?
It's the board to approve, the supervisor to appoint. If the board does not approve it, it does not happen. Attorney Jopp, would you like to chime in on that?
That's under the State Planning Act provides that the supervisor makes the appointment subject to approval of that appointed by the township board. That's how it works. So the supervisor makes his appointment and then brings it to the board for approval. Which is what's occurring.
So who just agreed to this? Which members of the board?
They have made a motion and supported a motion that has not been voted on yet.
They meaning the two board members?
Correct. Correct.
Naturally. Okay, I get it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to state that I think it's very unprofessional to not at least address Ms. Cox and ask if she wants to retain the position. I just think it's very unprofessional not to give her that option to be here and know of it.
I did call the number that I had on file, and it was disconnected.
Thank you, deputy supervisor. Now, attorney Jopp, is there anything being done here outside of the rules for this appointment?
No, there's a motion on the table to make an appointment to an open seat, a seat, as I understand it from looking at the chart, its term expires at the end of this year. Is that, so this would be effective January 1st. It's the board making the appointment, so there's no gap of vacant seat on the planning commission.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Any comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Zoning Board of Appeals appointment. Deputy supervisor, once again, right now, I believe the top is, we have seated...
Correct.
With one alternate.
Correct. And we have the resignation of Peggy.
Ms. Hyman's resigned, correct?
Yes. She had two more years on her terms. We need to please fill that one first.
Is that the first one in the red highlights?
Correct.
Okay. For that one, I would like to appoint Mary Beth Paisley from, starting December 16th, from January 1, 2017, to December 31st, 2019. Do I have any support for that?
Yes.
Mr. Supervisor, if I may ask...
Attorney Jopp.
Yeah, I've just discussed and confirmed that this would be for, if it is the vacant seat of Peggy Hyman, it would be through December 31st, 2018, not 2019.
Thank you, sir. Yep. So January 1st, 2017, through December 31st, 2018. Is that correct?
Yes.
Good.
That's one year?
All of 17 and all of 18.
Two years.
Two.
Actually, in that, I'm, I might have went out of order, but I'm going to do Mary Beth Paisley first on that one, be the second spot down, position number two in the red. So it would be this one right here. That position. That was separate from Peggy's term. I think it was the second position.
Okay. Peggy's position was number three. It had no term written in there.
Yeah, I went, I went out of order because there was a line there. I went to number two first. So what I'd like to do is point, like I said, Mary Beth Paisley to the position for December 16th, January 2017. Is that still stated 18, or would that go to 19?
That would be, you're not having her replaced in that?
No, I, there was a line there. I went to the second one instead of the first one. I apologize.
No, there would be a three-year position.
So it would be a three-year position for Mary Beth Paisley till 2019.
Yeah.
Motion on the floor.
I motion to accept Mary Beth Paisley, to appoint her to the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you. Any support? Thank you. I have a motion by trustee Gurley, supported by trustee Clifford. Any question or discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, absolutely. After last meeting, I came the very next day and put in for ZBA. Now, apparently, you're going to load all these offices with people that you know are on, which is not fair. We all know that Paisley was on the board.
Correct.
We know Marino lives, is a close friend of yours, and I'm saying like it is. Sorry. But was mine even considered for the ZBA?
You were considered for another position, which I discussed with the deputy supervisor.
But I did put in for that, so that was...
Right, I don't, I don't want to appoint you for that position.
Well, I disagree. I get that.
And if you're at the other meetings previous too, where I have made appointments in the past and they weren't accepted based on the board's like or dislike, those people stayed in position whether I wanted them there or not. It's part of the process where the supervisor appoints, the board approves. Simple as that. I'm sorry, I take that back on ZBA. Correct.
So how is that? The ZBA is not approved by the board, though?
It is still good.
No, this is under the zoning enabling act, a different act, and it provides for the ZBA that, it doesn't have a provision that says that the supervisor appoints and the board approves that appointment. What it says is that the township board of trustees shall appoint the members of the zoning board of appeals. So again, we are here anyway. It's the same body making the same decision. And I think what's happening here is instead of the supervisor appointing, he is presenting a candidate to the board and asking for a motion, and then a motion can be made, seconded, and then voted upon, just like anything else.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. I would like to, and I believe deputy supervisor Jerry Jeanette is the liaison to the ZBA, finishing out Mrs. Hyman's turn, is that correct?
That would work if that's approved.
Thank you. I would like to point Mr. Jeanette in Mrs. Hyman's position. Jerry currently sits on the planning commission.
You want Jerry on both?
No. His term is up.
You're getting rid of Chuck too.
His term is up. Chuck is on the planning commission still.
But it was Jerry.
Correct.
Being the planning commissioner of the ZBA.
Correct.
So you want Jerry on the CBA and the planning commission?
Yeah, just like Chuck is.
Do I have a motion to support that?
Peggy, two, your term is benching on yours.
Based on your resignation. I'll go back to the next one then, for four-year term for board of trustees, like to appoint That's a four-year term.
I make a motion we appoint Michelle Gurley to the planning, or the zoning board of
Do I have any support for that? Okay. I have a motion by trustee Clifford, supported by clerk Candle. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. ZBA? She would be the board of trustee, four years, she'd be the liaison to the ZBA.
Mr. Supervisor.
Yes, sir.
One issue, I believe, may have been created here that needs to be addressed at some point, either today or in the future date, which is that I think with Mr. Vennard now having been approved, his alternates on the ZBA, maybe that was on the list, I don't know.
Yes, he'll be stepping down from that position. We have an alternate position too.
There will be an alternate position.
Okay, thank you. Correct. Yes, sir.
Compared to the planning commission member liaison, I understand that that is still open before the board at this point? Because no motion was made previously?
Liaison, correct.
I've done a little quick look at the act.
Do they nominate that themselves?
No, they don't nominate that. However, I believe, and I'm not certain at this point, I would like to do a little bit more research on this, but I believe the planning commission members' term runs for their period as a planning commissioner. So just like the township board member, their term on the ZBA runs concurrent with your term on this body.
So that cannot replace till expires?
I think that may be the case. And when I saw that come up, I wasn't aware it was going to come up. When I saw that come up, I did a little bit of quick research, and that made me... When I saw that come up, I did a little bit of quick research and that may well be the case.
Would there be a problem with that being open until the next meeting?
I don't see a problem with that.
Okay, then I would like to leave it at that then for right now. I have no other appointments at this time. Michigan Township Association, MTA new officials training request, letter H. Can you come up to the podium, please? You should can.
Is there still an alternate on the ZBA?
Yes, we will have an alternate on the ZBA.
Is it still the person that was on when I was on before?
No. Does anybody want to discuss the new officials training request at this time?
Yeah.
Or are you?
I would be interested in going to their room.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford. Anybody else?
Yes.
Who's asking to go?
I am.
Okay, so treasurer, clerk, all trustees. December 13th, Port Huron, that's the one you'd like to all attend?
Yes.
Or alternative dates?
December 13th is fine with me.
December 13th is good with me.
Okay, and that's from 8:30 to 4:00 PM. In knowing this, the MTA is coming approaching, but you'd like to have this separate from that?
Yeah, due to work constraints on it, I'd like to go to the other one too, but I'll wait and see, I gotta wait and see about time off.
Okay. At what cost? Because there's book packages and things, at what cost are you asking for this request? What I'm getting at is they have a couple options. They have an option one and an option two.
That's exactly what I was just going to say, the second option would be my choice.
So all of you would like option two? Okay. To Michelle.
I'd like to make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the expenditure of $229 per person for four members to attend the MTA new officials training on December 13th at the Blue Water Convention Center in Port Huron.
My second.
Motion by Clerk Candle, supported by Trustee Gurley. Any other questions or discussion? Ma'am?
Yes, previous board members know that every four years, when there is a new election, the MTA conference is centered strictly, almost 80% on educating new board members. I see no reason to spend $800 plus a month before the MTA conference. Pick up classes there.
MTA conference is coming up, it is not until April.
Usually it's in January, so that's why I questioned.
They changed it, it's now not until April.
Okay, I understand that.
That's why I put this request forward, because I'm thinking, we're talking about four months of us kind of trying to learn, it might be beneficial to get that extra boost.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Michigan Township Association, MTA Conference, an expo request. This is the expo for April 10th through 13th in Lansing. It is in Lansing this year. I believe it's the first time it's been there, and this will be just approval for any board members that would like to attend to go.
I make a motion to approve whoever would like to go to the MTA conference, it's on the board. Can't hear you.
Can you slide your mic up, please? Thank you, it's time.
Okay, thanks, girl.
Okay, I have a motion by the treasurer. Any support?
I support.
Thank you. Supported by Clerk Candle. Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Department of Motor Vehicle Driving Record Review.
Basically, what we're asking for here is just that the board be made aware that as part of yearly background check, we go through the Department of Motor Vehicles and request information on all employees. That cost is $12 per record, and basically, I wanted to set it up so we can take care of the 2017 calendar year, so it won't be done until January, cover 2017.
And this should apply to anyone that's going to be driving a township vehicle at any time?
Correct.
And I believe the fire department does their own.
They do their own.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve purchasing and reconsider replay.
A second.
Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Treasurer Honald. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Employee Department Reassignment.
Sorry, come on.
It's okay. Might as well stay there, because it's coming up next, so. Basically, this is, I asked you to have this put on the agenda. What I'd like to have is the reassignment of the receptionist position put back underneath the Supervisors Department, where it was originally, just for supervision purposes only. Her functions, her title will not change in any way, shape, or fashion. She's still to assist other departments in need. Her personal contact or chain of command would be Jeanette, then myself. Like I said, if any other department needs her help, we'll make sure that it's allotted as long as she's not assisting the Building Department, which is, I think, her first main function outside of her's receptionary responsibilities. So it'd just be basically to move her back under the supervision of the Supervisors Department. Because that's how it was initially set up, and the Supervisors Office is supposed to oversee daily responsibilities. I'm just curious, the majority of her work as a receptionist, when I was on the board, which was only a month ago, seemed to be mostly the clerk in the Treasurer's office. And it also makes more sense, from what I've seen, and I was in the office quite a bit, their offices, those two offices generally always have someone there, whereas the Supervisors' Office, if Jeanette's gone to meetings or whatever, and you're not there, there's nobody to supervise that position. It makes more sense, in my book, to have an office that's 99.9% of the time has somebody in it, and they should be supervising that position. And I think that that position was moved for a reason. It was before I was on the board, but I would assume it was for a reason. I don't, when you start bouncing employees around, it's almost kind of scary, you get people start thinking, boy, is my position important? Everybody's moving me from here to there. If something's working, why mess with it? Just my opinion. All the more reason to be under the Supervisors Department, because the lower work between the two departments, so that it can be managed and accounted for, that we know what every use and every need of every department is, and like I said, it is supposed to be a secondary backup to the Building Department, which falls underneath the Supervisors Department. Even that doesn't make sense, because Jeanette is so busy, she's here on Fridays doing work because she can't get all of her work done. So why would that office have less work and be able to cover her, pay attention more? It seems like still, again, the other office would make more sense. Thank you, sir.
I haven't worked a Friday, and I can't remember when. And number two, Veronica does help every single department in the building.
Is there any support to move the receptionist position back under the Supervisors position? No support? Okay, thank you.
We've got renewal from half, past month, and then for the medical, for dental and vision, for half, we just received that Thursday. And I met with another company, Ron and I did, and we got another quote, and it's...
Mr. Swiss is here this evening to answer any and all questions. Appreciate you being here, sir, coming on tonight.
Right now, we're spending over $6,000 a month, $6,500 for medical only. Yeah, we can get medical, dental, and vision through Blue Cross at savings, spending just like $100 or $200 more than what we're spending now, just for medical. Dental is going up, vision is going up, our medical is going up, our plan has been discontinued through half. We would have to find another plan. For Blue Cross, it is a better plan, better coverage, and all three are still cheaper than what we're paying right now.
Your recommendation?
Go with Blue Cross.
Does anybody have a question? Mr. Swiss, if you'd like to come up if anybody has any questions for Mr. Swiss. Good evening, sir. Everybody's had the information, is anybody have any questions for Mr. Swiss?
I could just make a comment that in our shopping of the benefits, we have a number of your neighbors that we serve, that we have served a long time as their agents, which include Richmond, New Baltimore, Washington Township, Green City, Bruce Township, Algonard, Clay Township. And to that end, when we shot your benefits, we were looking to save the township money and also to save the employees' out-of-pocket money. And so, we were able to develop a plan that would reduce deductibles, reduce the coinsurance, and also reduce the dental and vision costs, and improve the vision, and improve the medical from the standpoint of reduced out-of-pocket and reduce costs to the township.
Yeah, those savings that we looked at were significant, especially to the out-of-pocket. Any questions? I don't have any. You have a motion?
I make the motion that we accept Blue Cross, Blue Shoe, alternate plan number two on our analysis for the employee insurance for the next calendar year.
I shot it there. Motion by Clerk Candle, supported by Trustee Clifford. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Thank you for working.
Let everyone know. This will also go into effect January 1st, so I will get all the information to all the employees. Thank you.
Thank you. 2017 meeting schedule. Everyone has a copy? Can you share a copy?
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
That's 16, that's... I don't have a copy, 17.
Should I give an extra copy? Tuesday, for the upcoming year, 2017, for the Board of Trustees meeting, Tuesday, January 3rd, 2017, February 6th, March 6th, April 3rd, I'm sorry, May 1st, June 5th, no July meeting, August 7th, Tuesday, September 5th, October 2nd, November 6th, December 4th, for Board of Trustees meeting. Planning Commission, January 23rd, February 27th, March 27th, April 24th, May 22nd, June 26th, July 24th, August 28th, September 25th, October 23rd, November 20th, and December All meetings are held at the Lennox Township offices here at the Crash and Evanual address. Special meetings or any changes in the above schedule will be posted as their schedules are changed. Zoning Board Appeal meets on the second or fourth Wednesday of the month, provided there's a petitioner. These meetings will be posted as scheduled, and holiday office hours may be observed between Christmas and New Year's Day, which we informed you about. Any questions, please give us a call here at 586-727-2085. Just to advise you of the holidays, it will be observed on the following dates, New Year's Day, Monday, January 2nd, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, January 16th, President's Day, February 20th, Good Friday, April 14th, Memorial Day, May 29th, Independence Day, July 4th, Labor Day, September 4th, Columbus Day, October 9th, Veterans Day, November 10th, Thanksgiving, November 23rd, and the day after, Thanksgiving, November 24th, Christmas Eve, December 22nd, Christmas Day, December 25th, and New Year's Eve, December 29th. Any questions? Any questions?
I make a motion to accept the meeting schedule as written.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Clerk Candle. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Public comment? Any public comment at this time?
Chris Boyd, Homerood. It's disheartening and a little scary to think that the Board bypassed people that applied for positions for Boards that come to meetings, show concern, are actually trying to participate. And appointed people that do not come to meetings have not shown any type of participation or interest in what goes on in this township. To just bypass them people and to knock people off of Boards without even asking them or giving them the option to stay, it's scary and it really makes me fear for the future of this township. I was hopeful for this new Board. At least a couple Board Members thought for themselves tonight and voted against things that were improper. I'm still hopeful, but it's scary. It's very, very scary to me. It makes me wonder if I even want to sell my house. And that's just being flat out honest. Very scary.
Thank you. Any other public comment? No more public comment. Number 12, Closed Sessions. Consider the purchase of real estate property to discuss confidential and privileged attorney-client correspondence of the Township Attorney.
I make the motion that we adjourn to closed session at 8:41, it looks like.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Clerk Candle, seconded by Treasurer Honold.
Supervisor, just to be clear, it's for the purposes that were stated in reading the agenda?
Yes.
Correct, ma'am. Any other questions or discussion? Deputy Clerk?
Gurley. Clifford?
Sorry.
Honold? Candle?
Aye.
Trunley?
Aye. Motion passes, closed session.
We return to open session at 9:56.
I'll second.
Motion by Clerk Candle, supported by Treasurer Honold. Any questions or discussion? Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Gurley? Aye. Clifford?
Aye.
Honold? Aye. Candle?
Aye.
Trunley?
Aye. Open session. Attorney Joppik, if you would, please?
Yes, if I could, I'd ask the Board to consider a motion to authorize the Township Attorney to proceed with the further discussions regarding the purchase of real property in the manner discussed in closed session pursuant to the presentation and my correspondence provided to the.
I would motion we allow you to do that.
I second.
Motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Trustee Gurley. Any other questions? I don't think we need roll call on that, do we? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Second part?
Okay, and the second part would be to ask the Board to authorize the Township Attorney's Office to proceed in the manner discussed in closed session pertaining to the confidential and privileged attorney-client communication provided to the Board dated, provide me a moment, December 2nd, 2016.
So, second.
Motion by Clerk Candle, supported by Treasurer Honold. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Joppik. Motion adjourned.
Motion by Trustee Clifford.
My man. I motion be adjourned at 9:58.
Supported by Treasurer Honold. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Be adjourned. Thank you.